Okay, everyone, it's 8:30. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I appreciate everyone's patience with our late start time to accommodate the end of the Passover holiday. And I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday week/weekend/ongoing holiday and meaningful observances for those who celebrate. We are here, this is the Highland Park Planning Board, April 13th, 2023 meeting, again adjourned from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. This meeting is officially called to order. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to The Star Ledger, Home News Tribune, and Highland Park Planet on January 31st, 2023. In addition, notice of this meeting time change was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 4th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on April 4th, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. We are appearing and meeting in person. Emergency exits can be found at either side of the room. All right. Tanya, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Brusher?
Here.
Mr. Chin?
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Lenaris?
Here.
Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Eisendorfer?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Kozensa?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
And that brings up, welcome to our newest member of our board, Mr. Steven Eisendorf. This is his first official meeting with us, so welcome. It'll be an interesting one. Okay, first up, we're going to have a public hearing on the review of a redevelopment plan sent to us by the Borough Council for 420 slash dash 424 Raritan Avenue, Block 3002, lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 30, 34, 35, 36, and 37. Not to be confused with additional lot numbers 1, 2, and 7, which were approved as part of the area, non-condemnation area in need of rehabilitation at our prior meeting, but those don't seem to be part of this redevelopment plan. So this plan is about the lots that I just specified, and our planner, Chris, is going to take over and give a presentation on what Borough Council would like us to review, and we'll review it to make sure this plan is not inconsistent with the town's master plan, which, as always, can be found on the Borough's website for review. Chris, take it away.
I want to make sure. Guys, you hear me?
It's working.
Okay, thank you. Well, as you guys know, back in the summer, we found that the pending closure of the grocery store created a real need to think about planning and for interim steps about what to do with the area, because there would be, obviously, a time period we would be faced without a local grocery store. So...
Chris, if you could, even though with the mic, could you just keep your voice up?
Sure.
If you don't mind, thank you.
So with regards to planning for the development/ redevelopment of the grocery store site, the Borough Council decided it was best to be proactive with its planning for the site through the local redevelopment housing law. And through that process, there's a number of benefits that can be done and gained from going through that process, and one of which is a redevelopment plan, which is what the board is here to review tonight. However, obviously, before you go adopt the redevelopment plan, an area must be designated first as an area in need of rehabilitation or an area in need of redevelopment. Back in 2016, the entire municipality was declared an area in need of rehabilitation. And recently, we went through the area in need of redevelopment site through a preliminary investigation, basically like a study, to really get the better benefits through the redevelopment designation as opposed to rehabilitation. So that is the process by which the Borough Council advised through the entity and the planning board to take, first, to do investigation through these steps, first by adopting a resolution to authorize a study, asking the planning board to review the study and make recommendations, which this board did just a couple of months ago, with the recommendation that this area should be declared as an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. Then the governing body decided whether or not to delineate that area, which they did, and they awarded or they designated the areas in need of redevelopment and sent the resolution to the state DCA office, which we received a letter saying they've recognized, yep, it's in a file, it's officially declared an area in need of redevelopment. The next step is do the plan, and that's what we're here doing tonight. Prior to that, obviously, you have to be authorized to do the plan, and there's one of two ways you can be doing it. Either the planning board can do the redevelopment plan, or the redevelopment entity could do the redevelopment plan. We did the latter, which is on the left side. So we prepared the plan first, and they introduced it like a land development ordinance to, and then referred that ordinance to the planning board to have, and this is what we're doing tonight, so we're almost quite done, we're almost done with that process. But even then, when there is a redevelopment plan, there's still a site plan application. I mean, before that, we had to designate a redeveloper to consider a concept plan for the site. So this is what we're doing tonight, is consistency review of the redevelopment plan with the master plan. And as part of that ongoing process, we had a community meeting at the end of February to really have a community conversation with the public to kind of explain, this is what's happening. And among the various topics that were discussed were, what are we going to be doing in the meantime? And we also expressed and released a couple of concept plans. This is what we're thinking for redevelopment. And those plans were shown and incorporated into this plan, and I'm going to show and kind of describe what those scenarios of development are. Basically, it was sort of a proactive meeting to really say, all hands are on deck, the community, we take this serious issue. Mayor Elsie Foster had the presentation and really expressed that this is an important issue to the governing body, and obviously, the planning board members in the community. So we had this meeting, actually, 120 people showed up, and so it's very well-received. And part of that discussion we had just a month ago, a month and a half ago, was to, we're going to be doing a redevelopment plan, and that's what we're here doing tonight. There's certain statutory requirements as to what is necessary for a redevelopment plan, for a valid redevelopment plan. I won't read through these verbatim, but generally, there needs to be a statement of relationship to the local master plan, as well as the neighboring municipalities, the county, and the state plan, some sort of provision for relocation of housing units. This site doesn't have any housing units, so actually, three of these issues are sort of not applicable in regards to housing units and affordable units. And then there's also the last element, which is the plan for zero emission, basically, EV charging equipment for public use. The most important thing, though, which I think what people are interested in, is what the redevelopment plan proposes in terms of the land use within the project area. How I typically categorize what a redevelopment plan is, is basically a mini master plan and a mini zoning ordinance for a very specific area in the borough. So what's the planning board's role? As the Madam Chair said, the role really is for the planning board, within 45 days of referral, to provide a report containing its recommendations, and it's really on the topic of as to whether the redevelopment plan is consistent with, or if it's not, it shall at least be designed to effectuate the master plan. So that's the board's duty tonight, is to make a determination whether the plan is consistent with the master plan or it is designed to effectuate and promote the master plan. The original study area for the preliminary investigation contained various lots, including the Wells Fargo lot, Park Town Center, the Stop &amp; Shop property, the Wells Fargo parking lot next to it, which is also used by some users at a Stop &amp; Shop, and the Landmark hair loft building. The redevelopment plan only pertains to a smaller portion of that, including the Stop &amp; Shop site and the parking area for the Wells Fargo lot. As we discussed during the preliminary investigation, when we did our research and as part of building the foundation of the relationship of this plan with the master plan, it was interesting when we did a research that the Stop &amp; Shop property formerly had two dwelling units as well as another structure facing on South Fourth. And over time, in 1960s, those structures were removed, and a grocery store was built fronting on Raritan Avenue. It's kind of interesting juxtaposition as to what you see now, which obviously, in 1971, the current store, so now the building's 50 years old, the current store was built way back with a huge gap in the streetscape. So this is the first aspect of the redevelopment plan, what the board's role is to make a determination whether this plan that we're proposing is consistent with the master plan. Obviously, the four main goals in a master plan is to preserve, enhance the small-town feel of the community, ensure a vibrant downtown, protect the sensitive areas of the community, and to promote a high-quality life of all residents. And part of the master plan effort back in 2019, so about four years ago, the master plan took an approach of looking at different corridors of the community as well as overall residential analysis. Part of the corridors that we looked at included the downtown Raritan Avenue, so this is Raritan Avenue turned on its side. And one of the sites that we looked at, just sort of like cursory review, like what can be done observing the existing conditions with the gap between the streetscape, includes, actually, this is four years ago, we looked at the Stop &amp; Shop site and noticed that there's a big gap between the Park Town Center and the hair loft and landmark supply building. And we felt that it was an opportunity for infill. And that was actually one of the schedule overs that was done by some of those on the team, including myself and some volunteer members of the subcommittee. And the thought process was, there could be infill housing on top of the Park Town Center, and it doesn't have to be housing, it could be office use. But we felt that there's an opportunity here, four years ago, who would have thought? But generally, the purpose of this study of the corridor was really to explain that we want to leverage reinvestment, revitalization, infill, and to really expand opportunities for mixed-use redevelopment, to really support that goal of vibrant, thriving downtown. And there's a number of strategies developed for the downtown corridor, including, let's go for a couple of them. One is to do custom-tailored redevelopment planning, which is what we're doing, expand a variety of ground-floor active uses, which this plan aims to do through its zoning, expand a downtown resident customer base, meaning adding housing in downtown area, and then encouraging any level of upgrade and reinvestment. I think as those who were present at the meeting, planning board members and the public understood that there's some issues with the Stop &amp; Shop site and the surrounding properties with regards to deferred maintenance and other issues. With regards to the bike ped plan, overall, the master plan seeks to improve mobility and safety, accessibility for all users, and it's based on the four Es, engineering, education, enforcement, and encouragement. So what this plan seeks to do is take that goal and really try to reactivate the streetscape, try to calm traffic down, make it safer for pedestrians, psycho environment, including improved sidewalk conditions, improved buffer, and some traffic calming measures. With respect to the relationship to adjacent towns in Millsix County, the project area is generally in the core of downtown, far away from the edges of the municipality, so there's really no conflict between the proposed plan and those of the adjacent towns in terms of land use with regards to towns of Edison, Piscataway Township, and City of New Brunswick. With regards to Millsix County, the land use plan element is still being updated, and from what I understand, typically, what happens is the land use plan will incorporate all redevelopment plans or zoning of its municipalities and for its consideration for updating its plan. So we don't anticipate any conflict with the Millsix County plan. With regards to Edison and Millsix County, both those documents, in terms of the master plan documents, do refer to Route 27 as a key corridor in terms of improving safety and using redevelopment to improve and infill. With regards to the state plan, quite simply, the state plan advocates for revitalizing downtown and using redevelopment. According to the state policy map, the Borough of Highland Park is situated in the metropolitan area, MA1 zone, which really, generally speaking, advocates for revitalization of its downtowns and keeping it to a compact form and using smart growth development. So this plan is not inconsistent with the state plan. So that's all the statements in regards to consistency review with both the local master plan as well as the adjacent municipalities, county, and the state. With regards to what are we here for, what's the vision for the site? Those of you who were at the community session on February 28th, this shouldn't be any different than what you saw before, except for minor tweaks and some elaboration and codification of the proposed zoning. Generally, for the vision of the project area, primary and foremost is to have a flexible approach. We don't want to be standoffish and make it difficult to do redevelopment. So we want to be flexible as possible to ensure that a grocery store uses reactivated as soon as possible. B is really exploring expanding customer base in nearby businesses, which again includes reactivating the streetscape and adding housing where appropriate, facilitating the revitalization of the streetscape condition, particularly along Raritan Avenue, improve the driveway connectivity, as we, I think we saw in the report that there was a lot of connectivity issues from the driveway ingress into the site at the front of the store, and there was actually several pedestrian accidents, including a fatality. So I want to take the opportunity through any redevelopment to improve on that condition and mitigate any longstanding stormwater infrastructure issues. So when we talk about flexibility in the plan, these scenarios are, I'm going to go through just three of them, there are three of millions of ways that property can be developed. But generally speaking, we try to focus on really two main tracks. One is where the existing grocery store in Gray is reused and rehabilitated, and there's some form of reinvestment in the streetscape through either green infrastructure, improved buffer, or some infill building along Raritan Avenue. So track one is reusing the grocery store with some sort of investment in the parking area. Track two is basically wholesale redevelopment, but within constrained or really more focused approach to the zoning, and that's sort of the benefits of redevelopment plans, have a more proactive approach to and setting very specific standards with regards to height, bulk, massing, and design. So going back to A, quite simply put, the goal is to improve connectivity vehicular and pedestrian, both from South Fifth to South Fourth throughout the site, with an improved entry corridor and raised speed table and pedestrian crossings through high visibility crosswalks and bump outs and bollards, narrow that driveway if it's reused as a one-way, close that driveway going out, that way it's only one driveway from Raritan Avenue, or it could be eliminated. The parking lot is generally reorganized, and the condition where the wheel stops sort of encroaching into the sidewalk, which is really a dangerous condition, is improved by a buffer with landscaping, which could include rain gardens and green infrastructure. Scenario B is similar approach, this improving pedestrian vehicular connectivity from South Fourth to South Fifth with the speed table and narrow driveway. This is just a different arrangement of parking that could be done, explore many different ways to kind of improve on the layout of the parking, which will reduce impervious coverage and improve stormwater retention. This scenario looks at a, I believe at the session we had on February 28th, we described it as a three-story building. When we codified the redevelopment plan that's been adopted before the board, we decided that we would utilize the same methodology we did with other downtown plans, which allowed to a four-story building with a fifth-story setback. The reason we showed three stories is because in all likelihood, that's what works for parking. But if a redeveloper comes in and is able to solve the parking, they could go up to four if it's story, and any redevelopment option is subject to the review and approval of the Borough Council before it even comes to the planning board for site plan approval. So there's still a lot of control over that. With regards to scenario C, this is a wholesale redevelopment. The current zoning allows for four stories. We felt that through this redevelopment method, we would utilize the creative approach of stepping back a building where built the portion of the site that's adjacent to the residential area, so you have these residential uses fronting South Fourth, as well as this property on South Fifth. Better for zoning, better zoning alternative to have the masting in the building reduced from four to three and allow for the taller masting on a five-story building up close to the Raritan Avenue. So you'd think that was a better approach than a four-story laid out for the entire site. And we have provisions in the redevelopment plan for prescribing various specific setbacks that really deal with making sure there's sufficient light and air between buildings and allow for enough creativity to be done for infill housing on the site. More than likely, the building wouldn't take this shape, it would have some sort of donut shape with a courtyard in the rear. The proposed zoning for the site, quite simply, is taking the site and dividing it in half, well, not quite half, into two parcels. Parcel A would contain the grocery store. In fact, we wrote the zoning as before the board, a grocery store is a required use. So that's important, which means any developer that wants to come in here has to accommodate the Borough's desire for the grocery store. It's not just a wishy-washy thing, we're actually putting in the zoning, it's a required use. Parcel B has some flexibility, right today, could accommodate a building if so be it. That really hasn't changed, but we do allow for this parcel to serve as overflow parking if Wells Fargo is party to the application. So that's really it. So again, we talked about this being a mini master plan and customized zoning for the site. We tried to be flexible in terms of what could be built, which is why there's several alternatives or scenarios of how, what could be developed on the site. And the bulk regulations are pretty loosely done to accommodate these scenarios, and the design standards are fairly straightforward, very similar to the downtown plan that we did a couple of years ago. The one main difference, I would say, is the parking regulations here are not as aggressive as the downtown plan is, because reality is, this site is not as close to the New Brunswick train station. And with the combination of a grocery store, which has a little higher intense use than a typical retail use, we felt that it was necessary to have increased parking requirements for the grocery store, as well as a higher standard for the residential. We set it at 1.33 parking spaces per unit as opposed to one with the other plans, so trying to create a balanced approach to how the site could be developed. One last thing, the proposed zoning for the site is intended to be a superseding plan, meaning it replaces the zoning underneath it, it's not an overlay. So that means any redeveloper that comes into the Borough seeking to be named a redeveloper has to come up with a concept plan that's agreeable to the redevelopment council before it comes to the board for site plan approval. So like we always say, this is not your last crack at the apple. There will be an opportunity after the Borough entity engages with a redeveloper to see the site plan. But there's lots of controls in the plan that allows for the Borough to really take control and be proactive with the use. One other thing I want to mention in terms of the zoning, there's a short section regarding temporary uses, understanding that the use, the grocery store use is now vacated, what do we do with the use in the meantime? So we wrote in a simple statement saying that temporary uses could be accommodated and coordinated with the redevelopment entities, really gave a lot of flexibility to the redevelopment entity in the meantime while we negotiate a concept plan for the site. So with that said, I believe I hit all eight other requirements of the redevelopment plan, and finally extensively went through the proposed land use with regards to the plan for EV charging stations. The redevelopment plan encourages that parking spaces that are utilized for EV charging infrastructure be utilized and shared with the public, which is not an uncommon provision in the ordinance. All other provisions regarding affordable housing and redevelopment are consistent with all other land development procedures. That's it.
Thank you very much. I don't know if members of the board want to come back to their seats while we have a discussion and commentary from the board. And Chris, if it's okay with you, I'll start with my question. For the building setback requirements for an infill liner building, it says the minimum setback from Raritan Avenue is zero feet. Does that account for the public sidewalk, or am I not understanding where the property line starts?
Oh, sure. No, that's a very common question. I remember when I first started doing zoning, I'm touching, I was like, where's the property line? Typically, the property line is about 10 to 15 feet behind the curb, so it generally does not include the public sidewalk.
Okay.
Typically, at the edge of the sidewalk.
And that's the case here.
That is approximately the case here. There probably is some portion of the public sidewalk that encroaches into private property, which is not an uncommon situation. Actually, that is the situation on Park Town Center where that was sidewalk, part of it is actually on private property.
All right. Daniel?
Hi. I just had a brief question about something you mentioned right at the end there. So you said this is a superseding zoning plan rather than an overlay. So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that when we propose an overlay, we're saying that somebody could come in and they could build under either zoning ordinance, basically.
Correct.
Whereas for this one, if this passes and is implemented, then they must adhere to this plan.
Correct.
And the big implication, if I understand it correctly, is that any proposal then, because it must be under this zoning proposal, it would have to include a supermarket, because again, it's superseding, not an overlay.
You got it.
Cool, thank you.
Steven?
So Chris, I have to confess, I found this plan deeply puzzling. So my understanding is this plan is essentially, we're casting a hook out into the sea, and this plan is part of the big. We're saying, developer, this is so attractive, you should want to do it. And so you have your vision in Section 6, I think? Section 5, and you end up by saying, okay, and so we have these illustrative plans.
Yep.
And then things get very, very detailed. The illustrative plans are written, there are almost enough detail to do a preliminary site plan application. They are very, very detailed, very top-down, and you're actually proposing a zoning ordinance, which is very detailed, so very top-down. And I don't, it seems to me there's an inconsistency, and you may even explain it to me, between the idea that this is really flexible, that a developer should really, a redeveloper should really want to come in, and we're open to all kinds of ideas, with the tremendous specificity in the various scenarios and the tremendous specificity in the zoning ordinance, which we don't even need at this point. You can do the zoning ordinance as a separate ordinance if you want to. So I just, I found it puzzling, why we're doing it that way, not improper, just puzzling.
So to that, I would say it's not unusual to include zoning requirements in any redevelopment plan. In fact, of all the plans we've done, we've done that. I would say, I've probably done about 15, 20 plans, and if all had zoning requirements over time...
Yeah, but the statute does the requirements.
It does not, just general building and planning provisions. The reason we do the specific zoning requirements is because there are certain things we do want to pay respect to, respect in regards to building setbacks, coverage, height and massing. The design standards are pretty straightforward, and it's really a rehash of the underlying zoning, but using the better aspects of what is in the underlying zoning. And the provision that's allowed, what the redevelopment plan also allows for is relief from the ordinance, so it doesn't have to be completely in compliance with the plan. The redevelopment plan does allow for variance to be granted with regards to...
Sure, but if you come in with something not matching those scenarios, then you've got to go through a various process. This doesn't look like fate to me. It looks like something that says, ah, we're going to be hard to work with, we have a lot of ideas, upfront ideas, and you have to conform to those ideas. So I don't know. I just found it puzzling, not necessarily improper, but puzzling given what we're trying to do.
What role are, I'm sorry, what role does the present owner of that property play in the redevelopment plan?
Well, they can be party to the redevelopment entity negotiation as a potential redeveloper. And I think as I wrote in the redevelopment plan, the Borough has been in negotiations with the property owners. There's a healthy relationship between the current property owner and the Borough to really facilitate something to happen here. As to whether they've engaged with potential users for the site, I'm not personally privy to that, but my understanding is that they take this situation very seriously as well. So they can be party as a redeveloper of the property, or they can be co-redeveloper with a redeveloper, with another developer, typically a local.
Just out of curiosity, are they planning to maintain their ownership stake in that property and develop it themselves, or are they planning to sell that space to someone else?
I'm not privy, I'm not sure Councilman Hale...
It's unclear at this point. Both of those are potential options, but it's unclear at this point which route they're going to go.
Yeah, the plan is silent, so it doesn't dictate whether they can and can't.
Right, the plan doesn't dictate which one of this, either one is possible.
Jeff?
Thanks. Great, Chris, this is great. Just a couple of questions. In terms of the grocery store requirement, it's set at a minimum of 15,000 square feet.
Yes.
Just curious, you know, it's two-part, where that number came from, whether it's an industry standard or whatnot, and then the existing building is 23,000 square feet roughly, so, you know, does this redevelopment plan open up the possibility of that building being cut up and having a smaller grocery store than what we had? I just, sort of like, you know, that's one of my one concern on it.
Right, so we debated utilizing a higher square footage, which matched the existing square footage, which I think is about 26,000 if I look at tax records. I'm not saying you're wrong, I could be wrong. So with regards to what would happen, what if there's a scenario if they want to rebuild a store fronting on, sorry, fronting on Raritan Avenue? Felt that a smaller square footage, using test bits under this sketch plan, there's a little sketchy plan we were doing, and we determined that about 12, 11, 13, 14,000 square feet... square feet is getting a little small. And then just doing general research, but the typical Lidl, Aldi stores, typically the smaller size are about 15, 16 to 20,000 square feet. We don't want to set it too high where we would prohibit those users coming in, but we didn't want it so small that it wouldn't be big enough to serve the community.
Okay.
But generally speaking, in my experience, a 15,000 square foot, a small grocery store that's commonly used, ranging up to 45 to 50,000.
Right.
Some would even go up to 80,000 square feet.
But it's not the intention of the borough to, you know, to take a redevelopment plan that really encourages, you know, because one of the scenarios is to reuse the building, actually two of the scenarios is to reuse the building.
Yes.
That really we're looking for is really somewhat to occupy the whole space as a grocery store, not, not to take a third of it and make it into something else.
Well, under the plan, technically that could happen, but since the borough has the authority to name a developer and a concept plan has to be approved, that would have to be approved by the redevelopment entity before the redevelopment agreement is established. But that, that is a possibility technically. And that's part of the flexibility we want to add. We don't want to be too rigid, but we also wanted to add flexibility for those things to happen.
And then I just, in terms of parking ratios, the, the new parking ratios that are in the redevelopment plan for grocery stores, is that sort of more or less than what's currently sort of ratioed for the current grocery store?
In terms of the zoning, it is less. But in terms of what's actually being utilized, especially since it's a walkable location, it's pretty comparable to what's actually needed for the site. But those are the minimum requirements. A developer may say, I need more. But we're also being practical and trying to be balanced, saying, you'd think one space per unit is too low. 1.33 is appropriate for residence.
Oh, I meant for the grocery store. Sorry, I meant for the commercial.
Yeah, just for the commercial.
It's about the same, it's about the same of what's currently being utilized.
In terms of the current utilization.
Yeah.
Well, when it was in operation, yes.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Chris, what would be the, right here, what would be the standard, if you know, for a Trader Joe's or an Ald, is it Aldi? I think Aldi.
Yeah, one of many.
Or, or something of that size. What would be the typical size store for that? If you know.
Done several studies, but couldn't give you a number, but probably about 20,000 square feet.
Okay. And this store, as far as you know, is roughly 20, or this building is roughly 23,000?
It's between 23 and 26,000.
Got it.
Sort of midsize.
Thank you.
And I think for a stop and shop, this size is actually smaller than what they're used to.
Right.
And that's part of the reason for the closure.
Any other members of the board have comments? No? With that then-
Let me, let me just ask one question of Chris. As you started off in the beginning, the, the board needs to make a determination as to whether or not there is consistency between this plan and the master plan. Since you are the planner, I think I know your opinion, but it might be helpful to put that on the record.
Yes.
And the reasons for that.
It is consistent with both the master plan of our local objectives, as well as the, those of contiguous municipalities, Millsix County and the state plan. I think the fact that we had a, a downtown corridor plan where we advocated for utilization of custom infill redevelopment planning to encourage economic growth, as well as for providing opportunities for housing and infill on the missing teeth of the corridor downtown, including a sketch of the site from four years ago of potentially an infill building at the site. And even one of the, even if you, the ultimate redevelopment concept is to simply reuse the store and to add the green buffer along the Raritan Avenue, that is consistent with the master plan, because it does seek for at least some level of reinvestment in the streetscape. And with regards to the pet bike plan, any type of traffic calming and pedestrian improvements to mitigate all the issues that we're identifying, study would be consistent with that effort as well.
Thank you.
All right. I think at this point, that means we're ready for public comments on the redevelopment plan and whether the redevelopment plan proposed tonight is not inconsistent with the master plan of the township. I'd like to ask all members of the public to please remember, when you do make your comments, state your name for the record and your address, spell your last name, and I'm going to ask that public comments be kept to three minutes per person to give everyone time to be heard this evening. So, if there is a member of the public wishing to be heard on this matter, Chris has the microphone?
Yeah.
And, and because this is a public hearing, we will need to swear you in. It's not painful at all, so I just want you to be aware. I'll, I'll be doing that. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
If, yeah, we need to get you on the mic.
Gentlemen, why don't we, why don't we let this, why don't we let the, the, the woman in the wheelchair speak first, and then we'll have the gentleman speak.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Would, would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and your address?
Diane Feldman, Epherson Frank, ELD, MAN, 409 North Fourth Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have just two minor comments on wording in the plan. In the section that talks about universal design, it refers to handicap accessible ramps and I believe parking space. And I know that there was an effort in town a couple of years ago to remove the word handicap from all of our ordinances. The handicap parking ordinance was renamed to the accessible parking. And so I'd like to reword those sections, I believe they're on page 66 or thereabouts, and remove the word handicap. That's it.
Thank you very much. Good suggestion.
Yes. Chris, do you, do you happen to know which page in the plan that might be on?
Well, we, we can certainly just take that and try to find-
Yeah, to respond.
Because there's going to be probably several sections, I assume, that make reference to that, but that can certainly be incorporated. If the board concurs with your planner, as well as any members of the public, that can be part of an addition or a suggestion, if you agree with the young lady.
Yes, thank you very much.
So page 59 of the plan, and to respond to the comment, I agree, and we should make that effort in all of our future redevelopment plans.
Thank you very much. All right. Sir, would you like to make a comment?
Sir, oh, you can, oh, okay. Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And again, state your name, spell your last name, and your address.
My name is Yehay Rosenthal, R-O-S-E-N-T-H-A-L. I live at 451 South Feas Avenue here in Highland Park. I have a comment and, and a question. The comment is that it doesn't seem to me that this development is consistent with what you say, that we want to keep this, this town as a small community. This seems to me a very large development. The second, so I would like the board to consider that. The second thing, I understand, and I under, you know, that there is a requirement for having grocery store. That's a very loose definition, as came here. So, is that a supermarket? Is that another small? And I, I do worry about developing something without having specifics on that, and how do we maintain it? So again, I would like to see a contract for 10, 20 years with a supermarket before we develop and not the other way around. Thank you.
Chris, do we have a source of definition for the term grocery store that's in the plan?
Typically, in that sense, you rely on the typical definitions from Mary Webster, probably. I know we had a comment about should be grocery store or supermarket, but the intent is that it would be a full-service supermarket, not like a Rite Aid or CPS, not a pharmacy.
And the, and the understanding, Chris, as I understand it, is that any redeveloper would have to come up with a plan that would be approved by the borough, and therefore that, and I think that's a very good comment.
Yes.
But I think that could be taken into account to assure that the definition becomes much more manifest as opposed to what you have now.
Yes. As part of the superseding plan, it requires that any developer must enter into, into a redevelopment agreement with the borough, basically like a contract, and all those issues, among other issues, can be addressed in that document.
Thank you. Were there any other members of the public who wish to be heard on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion on this application. Any members of the board have any final comments? Oh, yes.
Somewhere in the document, it says the supermarket should be at least 15,000 square feet.
Yes.
And you also had it, for every 400 square feet, you have to have one parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Which means that if you had a 15,000 square foot park, supermarket, you only need 37.5 parking spaces.
Yes.
Which is, is crazy.
Why don't you, why don't you be more definitive, Alan, so that we can understand what your concern is?
I mean, currently, the shop right has 117 parking spaces plus five-
Accessible?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
With, with no EV parking, by the way, I might, at least I assume there's not.
Right now, there's none.
Right. Which is going to be required as well.
And elsewhere in the, in the document, if you have residential above some part of the buildings, parking space for them is going to be somewhere between 1,000 feet. We set that all the way up and down the corridor, but where are they going?
Well, that's just a general statement, similar to other redevelopment plans. If a re developer can prove that they have the parking, or parking could be provided in coordination with the borough, that off-site parking can be counted towards the requirement. But I think generally speaking, we're trying to accommodate all the parking on this site, including an improvement on the Wells Fargo lot. As far as the parking requirement for the grocery store, it is low. If it's, if you look at it as a typical suburban grocery store, we found that this grocery store is extremely walkable location. And when it's renovated, we'll probably maintain its walkability. And from what we saw, at least in the past few years, maybe half the parking spaces were used, and many of those users were actually parking for Landmark Supply, as well as Park Town Center. So the parking for the grocery store was much lower than you would typically envision.
I would disagree with, go there on a Friday afternoon.
I, I agree with you. I disagree with you respectfully that that is a very low amount of parking. And the grocery store or supermarket being walkable, for some people, that's kind of irrelevant, because if you're toting lots of groceries-
Right.
You're going to drive. You're not walking to the grocery store. Many people don't have the luxury of going to the grocery store every day, so when they go to the grocery store and they stock up, they need to bring their vehicle. I'd also like to point out that the current parking lot is not just used for the grocery store, when the grocery store was open and operating. That's, parking lot is used as basically public municipal parking. I mean, not municipal parking, but it's used as a public parking. People park there to patron all of the other businesses that are nearby. So I, I do have concerns with the size of the parking lot that are, that's being presented in especially scenarios B and C.
Chris, one other quick question, sort of in that line. As you know, there have been other development approvals that have made reference to off, off-site parking.
Yes.
Is there some coordination? Because I hear the, the comments that have been made with regard to parking and its, its adequacy. Is there some coordination so that this developer doesn't come in and say, well, we have a spot, a spot within 1,000 feet, but back two years ago, five years ago, that was something that was utilized by Mr. Jones? Is there some coordination so that there's an understanding what spots are already sort of taken and what spots are not?
So with regards to downtown parking in general, we had the parking study, which sort of shown that there's a lot of issues, actually just not too much of a capacity issue, generally speaking. With regards to this site and really any specific development proposal, I will refer to, as an example, one of the developers for Track B, for example. In order to get the off-site parking approved and integrated and coordinated with the borough, that, that is actually one of the things we have to do. We have to coordinate with the redevelopment entity before we enter into a final redevelopment agreement. And there's a reason why that project hasn't moved forward, because that hasn't been done yet. So it's a lot of careful balancing. It's not, we're not just saying, oh, they got enough parking. So there's a level effort to ensure that that is done carefully, especially, and it's helpful that the parking study has been done since that time, to really open our eyes that there, there is flexibility in doing that, and be careful with the pending redevelopment plans and site plan applications, that those things are observed and handled. With regards to public parking, that does occur. I, I do know that some users of the adjacent buildings use that lot, and it's just out of convenience. I, I would hope that as part of the redevelopment discussion and negotiation with a re developer, that there'd be an effort to utilize other areas to increase parking demand, because there are many areas of the parking lot that are underutilized. And I think, just in the last few years alone, there's been a lot of use of like DoorDash and whatnot for those services where food, food is delivered. So, the typical requirement of one space for 250 is something from the 70s. And I think there's recognition even from residential site improvement standards, where those two spaces per unit is way over calculated. And we're coming to, down to a conclusion where you only need half the parking in terms of a calculation, and it's more really about the management of the parking. And that's partly why the parking study was initiated, to really start that deeper understanding and consideration of those issues. And that's all going to play a role in any redevelopment of this site or any downtown site. So it's certainly a management issue. I, I still think there's sufficient parking on the site. There very well may be developers out there saying, no, I need more parking, and that does happen.
One last comment. I think most families who are busy want to go to the supermarket once a week. Maybe, maybe they'll go a second time, but, and if you're buying for a whole week, you're family of four, you don't just carry that home in a bag.
Right.
You need a car to take it.
Jeff?
Yeah. So, you know, I, I, when I'd asked a question about whether the ratios in the redevelopment plan are consistent with the, you know, previous utilization of the parking, of the grocery store and the parking lot, and you said they're about the same. So, to me, that, that seems sufficient for the parking demand. But, but the other thing is, you're, you're adding one of the properties of Wells Fargo, which is just a parking lot.
Correct.
Which was not supposed to be used for the grocery store. So, in a sense, the amount of available parking for a grocery store will increase.
Yes. I mean, in a way, it functions that way now.
So it's more efficient. The parking layout, while the number, total number of spaces may not change very much.
Yes.
The way they're being programmed will allow for more effective, more, we more effective parking.
Yeah. So when I did my investigation for the redevelopment area, it was generally in the afternoon. So, and I still didn't see very much utilization, maybe 60% of it being used, and that was with users occupying spaces for other sites. So, and again, I think it comes down to a management issue, which will be a serious issue taking when the, a re developer is selected and prior to the execution of a redevelopment agreement.
I just, would just say, just as you make reference, that this, this plan is consistent, not inconsistent, not inconsistent with the master plan.
That's the crazy-
Yeah, you know, I'm never going to get that under the, professional plan, I never get that. But you mentioned the bike and pedestrian plan, and to have a, a, a walkable community and a safe cycling community, we need fewer cars. So I think, I think the lower parking ratios really are consistent with the master plan, and then bumping them up is really inconsistent with the master plan. So I think, I think you really hit the, I think the nice middle ground here.
Yeah, and that's what we're striving to, just strive a middle ground between those types of typologies. I don't disagree, people do need cars for the once-a-week shopping, and this doesn't prohibit that from happening. But there is, I think as you go to the site now, the bike racks in disrepair, so people really can't get to there, and they're tying their bikes around a column. So if we improve walkability and pedestrian safety, and for cyclists as well, those users will come. It won't replace the once-a-week shopping, or twice-a-week shopping, but that, that's why there's a careful balance. That's why it's not one space per 1,000, or no parking regulations. One per 400, a little bit bumped it up for the residential use, because these two uses don't share very well, because they have high active uses in the evenings and on weekends. So we're trying to be realistic, and we may find that a re developer says, I need a little bit more parking, and there's no problem with that. There's no maximum parking requirement. Just minimum.
I think one thing that we're not taking into consideration is the popularity of whatever this new grocery store slash supermarket may be. If it ends up being a store, like a Trader Joe's, for example, where that's going to where that's going to attract people from nearby towns to come to Highland Park, the amount of traffic and the amount of cars coming in and out of the parking lot are going to be very different than what we saw at our present Stop &amp; Shop, which wasn't a destination store. So I think those things should be taken into consideration, especially with regards to scenarios B and C, which create mixed-use buildings that are partly residential, partly, you know, commercial, and the traffic that just goes in and out of a residential building, you know, day-to-day life. I, I mean, scenario A is the most closest to the way that the space is being utilized presently. And scenarios B and C, to me, give me a lot of pause just in terms of, um, just usability and, and the space and the traffic and the congestion. And, yeah, I, I, it's, to me, I still have a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, and those are valid concerns and they're applicable to whether we do a redevelopment plan here or we just rely on underlying zoning. I hate to say that's something we'll deal with at site plan.
Right.
But we have that additional layer where we can negotiate that, especially if there's a user, if a redeveloper finds a user that we anticipate having a high turnover use for parking, that, that we partner in the negotiation process because then we may need, you know, you're going to need more parking. It's a, thank, thank goodness you have that popular use. That's a benefit to us. We may need to amend the plan or they'll seek waivers or exceptions on the parking regulations or may have to find all site. There's lots of flexibility in the plan and a lot of the power is sort of given to the redevelopment entity before it comes here for traffic analysis.
So my last question is with the zoning. I really do appreciate the fact that the council has taken into consideration making the zoning strictly inclusive of a grocery store. Does it have to include mixed use for that space? Can that space strictly be commercial? Does it have to be commercial slash residential?
It can just be a grocery store like it is today.
But in voting on whether or not this plan is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan, can that be left out? If we vote that this is consistent with the master plan, we're leaving open the possibility for this space to be a mixed-use space instead of strictly grocery store.
That's correct, you are.
I, I don't think leaving it only as a grocery store use would be inconsistent with the master plan because it also talks about some sort of level of reinvestment into the frontage condition, which is one, actually the last strategy for the downtown area. And for that matter, this was developed that way 50 years ago. So it's not inconsistent with the existing zoning patterns. Ideally, there is a mixed use, but doesn't make it inconsistent, in my opinion. I think if you were to say, if this is a hotel with a use variance, perhaps so.
I'm sorry, one more thing.
This is the last one?
Last one, I promise. As it stands right now in the borough, we don't have any other area that we could foresee a grocery store going. As it stands right now in Highland Park, this is the only place we could put a grocery store, correct?
Well, grocery store can be put anywhere if it has the site for parking.
Anywhere, but we don't really have a site earmarked or any other site in mind that is available that could be developed as a grocery store.
Not as far as I'm aware, no.
Well, I mean, I think technically we've got a mini grocery store going into that, a Greek grocery store going in.
Yes, and Park Deli has stepped up their produce section, so we have that.
But this would dedicate this space specifically to have to include a grocery store.
Yes.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, Roger, but Patrick, did you have one comment?
Yeah, Chris, is there anything in this plan that limits the developer's ability to put in a below-ground parking structure?
Uh, it doesn't prohibit them. They can entertain it in any different form.
So that would, if you're making this into a destination type of environment, which, you know, if anybody's going to want to spend money here in Highland Park, they're going to have to make money back. So it's going to have to be, I think, something big. So that would be, you know, something, you know, that is a possibility. But as far as I can see, this, this, the, this plan does, you know, does what it's supposed to do. And it does, I think, by, let's say, requiring the supermarket. That's the only thing the town really wants. And, and everything else we'll figure out. And frankly, we're in more need of a supermarket than a developer is in need of coming in and building one. So that's the type of attitude I think we need to keep focused.
And that's why we want to keep that flexibility because we want to allow for that option.
Here, here.
If, if there's no other comments, I, I think it's at a point where an action can be taken. If you are in agreement generally that the plan is not inconsistent with the master plan, that would be the fundamental motion that would be looked at.
Subject to the modification for the language.
That's what I was going to say. There's, there's a couple of things that I heard that could be, if you want, conditions or suggestions as part of the plan. One was certainly the language change that has been suggested to change the reference of handicap parking and ramps to accessible parking and ramps. I think everybody would agree with that. And then I'll leave it to the mover as to whether or not there should be a suggestion as to whether or not there should be some consideration or, or, uh, I don't know about further study, but some consideration with regard to the amount of parking, particularly as it may relate to a, and I'm going to try to couch my words as best I can and somebody can modify it if they choose, that if there is to be a scenario B or C with a destination store, and we can define that as possibly a Whole Foods or a Trader Joe's, that the, the parking then would be looked at a little closer. So that, it, it doesn't make it inconsistent, but it does make the suggestion that the concerns that I've heard by members of the board will be taken into, hopefully will be taken into account. So that would be the nature of that, of that motion if, if somebody wants to make it.
All right, would anyone like to present a motion for consideration?
I would like to make a motion for consideration.
All right, Kalidra. What's the motion you'd like to make?
Is, is that the one, rather than, yeah, there we go. Thank you very much.
That's fine, all right. First, a motion made by Kalidra, seconded by Patrick. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Lenaris?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Yes.
Mr. Perelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Eisdorfer?
Yes, Eisdorfer.
Is it Eisdorfer or Eisdorfer?
Still yes.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, Steve, honest to God.
All right, thank you. Yes.
My question for Chris.
Go ahead.
Chris?
On page 50, you refer to a bedroom as opposed to bedrock.
Well, this is, this is the.
It is.
This is the Fred Flintstone plan.
You were talking about the soils and such.
It's just, it's just a typo. It's just a typo. We don't, we don't need to include that.
I have no further comments.
Thank you very much, Alan. All right, I, I'm just going to move this right along. Our next matter is the application of JSM at Highland Park for the project more commonly known as Gabriel Estates, looking, located on South Sixth Avenue. Gentlemen, I appreciate your patience and consideration this evening. I am going to make a note that it is our board's policy under our rules to cease taking testimony after 10:30, so I'm going to ask that you bear that in mind as you question your witnesses for your application. We're here on your preliminary and final major site plan approval. See variances and exceptions and requests for the waiver of submission requirements. Before we get into the details of your application, we have to make a finding on the completeness of your application. So with that, I'm going to ask that our, we'll start with our, our board engineer to provide some commentary on the completeness of the application waiver request.
Madam Chairman, before we do that.
Yes, sir.
I ought to make a disclosure.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Please, please.
Okay, so let me just indicate that, um, that I had, that I represented Mr. Morris and Mr. Morris's entities before the year 2000 in various land use matters, not in the past 20 years. And I also represented an objector to one of Mr. Morris's projects in Monroe approximately 10 years ago. Those were all in the past, but I think that they ought to be on the record.
I, I appreciate that, Steve. And, and as, so that the board members know, Steve was, was a, an attorney in the land use field for many, many years. So I just, that's why he's talking about this. He, he brought that up to me and I think it is appropriate that he indicated for the record what those issues are. I, I turn to the applicant's counsel. Do you have any objection with regard to Mr. Eisdorfer's continued participation?
I have no objection.
You and I both understand that, but that has, in a sense, I guess it does have something to do with this project. So I, I also, I also don't feel as though that distant involvement with this particular applicant has any relevance. And therefore, I do not find that it is a requirement, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, a requirement to end up having a statutory conflict. So I do think that as long as there's no, no objection by the applicant and no objection by the board members, Steve can continue to sit. But thank you for making that disclosure. I appreciate that.
Just for clarity on the disclosure, Mr. Morris is the principal of JSM.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right then, if, if Chris Costanza, our, I'm sorry, Bruce Koch, our, our engineer, could provide us with some commentary on the applicant's request for waivers from the checklist requirements? Unless the applicant wants to start or whoever feels motivated to start.
You know, maybe, maybe we could end up getting that other mic to work. I mean, the one over, that's on the other side. Bruce, there's another mic on the far end.
Hey, Madam Chair, my report April 7, 2023, which was previously, two comments that were previously discussed in my earlier reviews as it relates to completeness. The first one is the applicant is requesting a waiver from the checklist requirement for providing existing topography for 200 feet around the parcel. Given the developed nature of the land, I didn't have it, and I did not take exception to that. And the other item is the typical retaining wall construction details, but not the retaining wall designs are required by the checklist. The applicant is agreeing to do that, but they'll do it prior to construction when they apply for building permits. If the board's willing to grant those two waivers, then from an engineering perspective, this application could be deemed complete.
Thank you, Bruce.
Uh, just, Chris, uh, Bruce, before you give up the mic, if you could clarify a little bit for the board why the waiver of the topography requirement you felt was not needed for this development application?
I've seen this request on other applications when it's fully developed around the perimeter of the subject parcel. And we have topography of the whole town, so it didn't limit my ability to do a drainage review. We were able to determine the total drainage area to this site all the way up into Edison. So that's why I didn't feel it was necessary. I don't know that it affects the public in terms of that. There is topography right up to the property lines.
Thank you. And Mr. Wolfson, on behalf of your client, are you in agreement with Mr. Koch's position that you're going to be providing details about the retaining walls before construction, even though we don't have those today?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, were there any other waivers from the checklist that you were seeking?
I think so. Not at all. Chris?
Chris, you, I believe there is one related to the tree removal plan, but the applicant has agreed to provide one prior to construction. Given that any development requiring tree removal has to be reviewed and approved before the building gets built, I, I don't think it is prudent that the board sees it first before the construction office does. Either way, it's going to be looked at prior to any sort of construction. So I have no objection to the wa, that waiver being approved.
So the waiver of the tree plan at this stage is not a waiver of the tree removal plan just at this stage of development?
Correct. I would not recommend waiver of the tree removal requirements, just the timing of the, when the plan.
For purposes of completeness.
For purposes of completeness.
Got it. Uh, with anything further, Chris?
Scott, uh, sorry, Bruce addressed the other two.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Bruce addressed the other two matters online.
Uh, with that, ladies and gentlemen of the board, if you agree with your consultants, I would suggest that what you do is, Madam Chair, solicit a motion to deem the applicant, application complete, granting the waivers that are outlined by, by both Bruce and Chris.
Would anyone like to make that motion? Don't be shy.
Motion to deem the application complete.
All right.
Granting the waivers.
I have a first, so I have a second?
Or.
Second by Alan Williams. We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yep.
Mr. Chin?
No.
Ms. Hadhazy?
No.
Mr. Hale?
I, I'm sorry, can I just ask a point of order? We are approving the waivers before having a discussion about the waivers?
No.
Well, you certainly, I mean, if you had, if you wanted to have a discussion, it would have been prudent to have indicated that before the vote, the roll call, but.
Fair enough, then I'm going to steam.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Lenaris?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Perelman?
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Eisdorfer?
Yes.
The matter is deemed complete as of today. Counselors, if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. For the record, I am Doug Wolfson and represent the applicant in this case. We are here in conjunction with the proposed development of what I think is commonly referred to in the town where I grew up as the Buckwoods property. This is the property that was a subject to a settlement agreement through litigation in conjunction with the township's affordable housing requirements. This has resulted in a structure and a building that, actually, to my knowledge, is the first time I've ever been involved to a situation where the township took, or the borough was so heavily involved in the design and to good effort and with good results of the building to make sure that it is in keeping to the extent possible with the traditions and history of this borough and in conjunction with the neighborhood that surrounds it. So I want to thank the professionals for the town for their substantial and significant guidance in coming up with the proposal and the design that we had to run with. With me tonight is Ron Almbach, who's the Director of Planning and Development for the parent company, Edgewood Properties, also a principal of Jack Morris. And if the board, please, have you swear him in so we can get started?
Sure.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help be God? Again, again, would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name and give us the location of your offices, please?
Sure. Again, Ron Almbach, A U L E N V A C H. Address is 1260 Stelton Road, Nethers Duscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Ron, we were tasked with putting forth a development application to comply with the settlement agreement and ordinances that were enacted pursuant thereto to provide a 75-unit project with 15% set aside for affordable housing. Can you tell the board, you know, how we did that and go through the plans? If you want me to hand those out, I will do so.
Yeah, thank you. As Mr. Wolfson indicated, the site has a long history with our company, with the borough. And within the last few years, we were able to come to a settlement with the borough to agree on the 75-unit four-story building. We were tasked with providing the development and all the development features for the site and the architecturals, which obviously have a lot of standards, both in the ordinance and both what your professionals. The professionals have been a pleasure to work with. We've had several meetings over the years, even recently, just to go through the plans and try to clean up the plans the best we can to try to minimize the amount of comments and to provide compliance with the plans. Mr. Wolfson is handing out a packet.
And while, while he's doing that, that's, you anticipated, while he's doing that, I think we should mark this package as A1. And Ron, if you'd be kind enough to maybe identify it, certainly it appears as though it's multiple pages, so I'll let you give us a little bit more information about it. Do you want to have it as A1 as one package or do you want to do it individually? It's up to you.
It's up to the board's pleasure. I could do it as one or do it as A1 through 20, however the board feels. I mean, some of the.
I'd like to do it as, it just makes it easier, I think, to do it as A1. Do you happen to know, I, I don't necessarily want to count them, but do you happen to know how many pages this is?
20.
20, thank you. So A1 would be 20 pages, starting off with a, an aerial view of the property and, and thereafter.
And you said the board's aware, I don't anticipate using all 20 sheets. There are some, some of the sheets that are in there are replicants of what's in your package from the site plan, for example, existing site features, the proposed site plan, the landscaping plan. The back pages are the architecturals that were, the black and white architecturals that were submitted. So I'll go through the, the packet, but I may skip over some of the pages because they're redundant to what's in your package already. But I wanted to bring them in case there was questions of professionals and/or the board to have them handy to put up on my easel behind me. As Mr. Wolfson indicated, this is a property that's located at the terminus of South Sixth Avenue. It is surrounded by South Seventh Avenue and residential houses to the north of it and then also residential houses in South Fifth Avenue on the other side. I apologize if I'm blocking any, any of the public's view. I try to do my best to stay out of the. I try to do my best to stay out of the way.
It might be, I know that Bruce is sort of familiar with this. Why don't you go on the other side? Bruce has got his own small package. There you go.
Sorry, Bruce. Again, as indicated, the projects at the terminus of South Sixth Avenue, South Seventh is page, top page, South Fifth down here. It compromises about 45 individual little 20 or 25-foot lots that were part of an assembly that was put together 25, 26 years ago. This project's been around longer than me, and I've been here since 99. The proposal that's before you tonight.
Now you're doing, now, just so the record's clear, now you're showing us what is now the second sheet in the package.
Yeah, this is a rendered site plan, taking the existing site plan, it's in your package, and just rendering it up to show different elements of it. Again, as you come in off of South Sixth Avenue, you have the motor court area here for drop-off area, and then as you proceed around the building, you go down below. So there's a parking level below the structure itself. So there's a ramp down here, you get underneath the building, and then the entire structure underneath has one big parking level. And then you have a walkway, as well as emergency access, that traverses the entire site. One of the things that the planner will go into is something that the borough required early on in design was, we originally didn't have full access for fire all the way around the building. They were asking for us to accommodate vehicular access all the way around the entire building. We had to make some changes and slide the building down, but we now have accommodated that, and I believe we have a no comment letter from the fire official, but we did provide that. At the southern end of the property, we have detention basins, as well as a walkway, a public walkway that traverses the site and ends at the terminus of our property at the southern end. There are retaining walls on both, all three sides, in fact, the north side, the west side, east side, all have retaining walls. If you're familiar with the site, it's kind of like a V. So there's severe topo there. Our plan is to, and this is part of what was negotiated as part of the ordinance when it was written, was the concern about where the bottom level was going to be, where the top level was going to be, and what was decided from the borough and what the height was going to ultimately be. So we will be digging out to put the building down at the bottom of the hole, if you will. There's existing utilities that run currently through the site. Again, this used to be a paper street for South Sixth that ran all the way through. There's existing water, sanitary, and storm that will be relocated as part of our development. They will be relocated around the building and then go back into where they go now, as well as the additional, our own private utilities that will be accommodated onto the site itself. The stormwater is anticipated to meet all new stormwater regulations. Again, we're working very closely with the borough engineer. I'm going through this process and how we're meeting all the requirements. Again, when you come in off the motor court, there's several visitor parking spaces there that are located for visitors to come in and go inside. This is a rental project, so the leasing office will be off of the motor court, and then the garage itself will be a private entrance for residents only to go down. It will be gated for the residents to get in there. They also can buzz in, visitors, if somebody comes in. And then also, on the outskirts of the project itself, is our outdoor garbage area, trash area, that's located in the northeast corner of the site. It's a U-shaped building, so there's units that face both the outside of the development itself, as well as an interior courtyard. So there's a courtyard in the middle here that's located up on top of the parking level or podium deck. The deck, again, because of the way the slope is of the site, the deck is exposed about halfway, halfway in each side of the sides and fully exposed in the back, again, taking advantage of the natural terrain of the property.
Can I interrupt one second? I was just handed by your counsel a letter from the Middlesex County Department of Public Health and Safety, and it is with regard to the, from the deputy fire marshal, Mr. Pearlman, indicating that they have reviewed the site, and there's a no comment. So I think that should be made as part of the record as A2. And I'm going to hand that over to.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, what's the date of that letter? Is that to January 11, 2023?
January 11. Is that what I, I did say that, I hope?
I was just confirming because I have a copy of it.
Yes, January 11.
That's the January 11, 2023 letter. There's a prior letter in the application. It's January 11 letters what they're referencing.
Right.
Again, there's terraced walls, if you will, that come off of the sides, again, to accommodate the grade differential between the adjoining properties and our development itself. The next, Mr. Thomas, I apologize, I do not know what page this is.
While you're doing that, I'll look for it.
This is the architectural plans, and it's the parking level, A1 is the drawing itself. It might be towards the rear of the package.
That's what I'm looking at right now. I'm sure it's in the back, but I.
Is this A1?
It's after the drawings.
Oh, it's after the drawings? Okay.
Yeah.
It looks, that is, that's the parking. It's a little hard to see, that's the parking.
Yeah, the parking.
Okay. So as the chair has indicated, if you look after the drawings, the first sheet after the drawings is where you'll find it. And that's near the end of the package.
Page 13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can count.
Yeah.
Again, I think this drawing is important to show the board because this is how the parking level functions. Again, as indicated, on the left side of the page, the north side, is where the ramp would be, if you will, that comes down into the parking level. And then you have a series of parking spaces all the way around. You can see the columns that support the structure above, the stairwells that are required by code in here, as well as several mechanical rooms, trash compactor. The individual units will have trash chutes, the building itself will have trash chutes. So there's an internal trash compactor located in this underground or lower parking level. There's an elevator to the right of that, and as I indicated, several mechanical rooms where various utilities will be stored. As I indicated, this is a situation where a portion of it on both sides is exposed to get natural air into the deck, as well as the southern end or the bottom piece of the deck is exposed, again, to allow for natural ventilation and natural air to get
All right, on the bottom of these sheets, Ron, as I understand, the bottom right of the sheet, it has a reference to it, an A something drawing, what's that, what drawing is that?
This is A2.
A2. It is the next page of the package, ladies and gentlemen.
This is the first floor plan, which is where you come in at grade off the motor court. You have your lobby there. You have the building amenities that straddle the lobby when you come in. Then you have your courtyard, again, as you go. And then you have various units. These are two-story townhouse units that are located on the first and second floor. So if you look on the floor plan, I know it's a little difficult on 11 by 17, but there's individual stairwells in each of the units. So again, they're two-story units on the first and second floor, which have access to it. So you come in from the, the entrances are off the sides, you come into your unit, you have your living room space, your family room, bedroom, dining room, and then you have the stairs that go up into the additional bedrooms located on the second floor. The units that are at the corners are what we refer to as flats, they're not the two-story units, the ones at the corners are one single level. Again, so the townhouses go from the first and second floor, the flats are each individual floor. And again, as you work your way up the building, as you look at sheet A3, this is the second floor plan. And again, as indicated, this would be the upper level of what we refer to as those townhouse type style units with the up and down. Again, we have flat units at the southern end of the building, and then in the front, we have flat units, again, above what would have been the amenities or the lobby area facing the front. And again, those are flat style units, single level. As you work your way up to the third floor, the entire floor becomes just single level flats, if you will.
And that's sheet A4.
Sheet A4, yes, thank you. This one, you can see the difference is you have a central hallway that runs down the entire center of the three legs, and that feeds the units off of either side. Again, we have the units in the back southern end of it, we have the open courtyard that faces the southern direction, and then you have the stacked units, if you will, around the complete perimeter of the site itself. The fourth floor.
Sheet A5.
Sheet A5. This is where it gets a little trickier when you're looking at the units, because one of the things that the board's professionals tried to implement in the ordinance was that the upper level or the fourth floor, from the outside, didn't give a true appearance of a fourth floor. So there's a lot of areas in here that where there's outside roofs and gables, because they wanted to give the appearance of almost like a half-story on the outside. When I show the elevations, you might understand it, but instead of having just four units stacked on top of each other for a traditional flat roof or gable roof, the board professionals felt it was important to try to bring the scale of that down and introduce some dormer windows along the top to kind of, again, bring down the scale of that roof as it, those are the area where you'd be facing the backs of the houses on both Seventh and Fifth. One of the things that we wanted to do to accommodate, we received a letter, which I know we're going to go into detail with some of the professional letters, we received a letter from LRK dated April 5. We were able to provide a few renderings based on the suggestions by Chris and slightly different than this. Again, should this board act favorably on this, we agree to work with Chris's office to come up with some of the suggestions in his latest letter, and I'll go through his letter in a little bit.
Okay.
Where he's asking for some of the different facade treatments as it relates to some of the roof levels, specifically in the front of the building as you face, will be facing South Sixth.
And Ron, just so it's clear, everybody's looking at A7?
A6, I'm sorry.
That's A6?
Yeah.
Or is it? No, it's not A6.
No, A6 is the roof.
No, A6 is the roof, that would be A7. Or at least that's what our package shows.
I apologize.
That's okay.
What's that?
A7, I apologize. So again, there were some minor comments on the front elevation that Chris had asked about, and the architect had come up with a couple of suggestions. And again, I think you'll see in one of the letters, I think that we've, you know, the architects have really worked very well with the professionals in accommodating a lot of their concerns and comments through the development process of the site itself. Mr. Wolfson, I believe that's an overview of the proposal that's before them tonight.
So bearing in mind a little bit of time, Madam Chair, let's go through the review letters to make sure everybody knows we're on the same page as your professionals. Which one do you want to start with, Bruce's or Chris's?
Start with Bruce.
This is the letter of April 7.
Bruce's is a letter of April 7.
Thank you.
From Bruce Koch from CME Associates. Do you have a copy of that with you, Ron?
I do.
All right. I don't know if the members of the board have it in their packet, but they can read along, hopefully. So let's go through that letter to make sure that we've satisfied those things that we can and explain the testimony where he's asked for it.
Sure. Madam Chairman, if it's appropriate, I'll go through the letter. If it's a statement, I'm obviously going to say that. If it's simple, we'll comply. I'll put that on our record as well and leave my testimony to just the ones I think that Bruce needed testimony on.
Thank you.
Are we starting? I assume we're not dealing with the completeness, we're done with that. Project overview, I assume we don't need to deal with that, so we're dealing with general improvements or?
Right, page 2 of it.
Page 2 of it, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Again, starting page 2, on the general site improvements, number 6, 7, and 8 are all will complies. Number 9 and 10 are both statements. Number 11, one of the things that was.
Isn't number, is number 10 a will comply, or is it a statement?
It says the applicant should design, should provide design details and calculations that are signed and sealed, and you'll agree to do that.
I apologize.
No problem.
And again, this is about the retaining walls.
Right, I apologize, yes.
Thank you.
On number 11, Mr. Koch is asking about the segmental walls and structural retaining walls and the bench areas being tiered and how they'll be maintained. When we design the site, the walls are designed to have access along the tiers from the grading end so they can get in there and they can maintain the tiered wall from both the lower and upper sections. So there's access on all sides of the wall to make sure.
I'm sorry, when you say wall, you mean retaining wall, not the building wall?
Retaining wall, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's, we have a lot of members of the public here, they haven't had probably the benefit of your insight into the project, so some clarity for them is always helpful.
I apologize, I'm strictly talking about retaining walls right now. So he's just asking about how they'd be maintained, and as indicated, there's openings at the ends of the walls for the maintenance people to get in there and maintain the walls and those benched areas. Number 12 talks about.
Can I just interrupt?
Sure.
Is that something that's acceptable to you, Bruce?
Yeah.
Number 12 talks about the feasibility of replacing the structural wall. Again, based on our manufacturer specifications, this, these types of retaining walls have a 75 to 100-year lifespan, although at some point, they will need to be replaced. We're confident that some of the walls, because they range from 6 to 10 feet, can be replaced from the downside, we call it, or the low side if possible, if needed, because it's only going to be small areas that have to be replaced, and we're confident that those walls can be replaced if and when they ever need to be replaced.
But don't call me as a.
Bruce, do you have any?
Bruce, excuse me, Doug, you'll be around. Again, that's acceptable, as I understand.
I don't. Chris can move the reading along.
Sure, but you're in agreement with the testimony about the ability to replace the retaining walls and how that could be done in the future? Okay.
Going to top of page 3, number 13 is a will comply. Number 14 is a statement, just basically says the town, the borough will maintain easements for their utilities, will maintain ownership and maintenance of our private utilities on the site.
So it's sort of a statement that you agree with?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Do you have a comment, Bruce?
They agree with it, it's more of a statement from me to the board.
Got it.
Those that traverse the site now and are being relocated will remain in the ownership and maintenance responsibly aligned with the borough. The services running up that to the building will be our property owners and developers.
Got it.
Agreed.
Give to developer, what's the developer, and give to the town, what's the town's?
Right.
Okay.
We're going to come back to 15.
What's that?
Skip 15.
That's fine.
Number 16 is a will comply. Number 17.
Wait, wait, but before you say will comply, the last sentence of that paragraph says, there will still be a need for analysis to be performed to address the above concern. Where does the will comply comport with that?
We agree to do the analysis.
Okay, and who's going to review the analysis?
Bruce.
Okay. Thank you.
17 is a statement, just indicating that we provided a second connection for 16 and 41. With stormwater management, yeah, there's several items in here. I've had the opportunity to speak to the engineer, and we feel that there's a majority of these items, and I'll defer to Bruce to speak on all of his words and his mouth, that we believe are minor and can be worked out between developer and the engineer. But again, I'll speak for.
18, I can't hear you.
There's several in here, I'll let Mr. Koch speak to, there's several items in here that overlap.
Yes, many of these comments, if not all of them, are very entwined, and really what it comes down to is the approach to it. They're relying on a wetlands delineation. We believe it should be based upon a flood hazard area verification. Mr. Almbach and I have had the opportunity to discuss that, and I think he understands what our concern is. My understanding is we will. My understanding is we will reconvene if the board takes favorable action. If they need to get that verification, they will. But I believe in the end, the design, or the outcome will be the same, it's just the approach and which approach I am more comfortable with.
Bruce, if you could just outline for the record and for the board and for the public for that matter, we're talking about all of the comments on stormwater management system, or stormwater management system, 18 through whatever, or can you just outline which ones you are now referring to so that I can...
Well, I would say they are...
18?
Pardon me. Any of them that say they should provide additional testimony or provide testimony on them. If they say they've agreed, that means they're already agreeing to doing it. So it would be all the stormwater matters, but the most, the ones we're focusing on with this per typical, this pertinent discussion is those where I ask for testimony.
Okay. So is that testimony that Mr. Allenbach is going to provide?
I believe he has, trying to sum it up, that I think prior to this meeting, I explained the different viewpoint of how they're approaching it versus us. And I believe, speaking for myself and I believe for him, that we've had a meeting of the minds about that. They're going to approach it from the angle that we're looking at it from, and if everything pans out right, then all these comments will either disappear or be addressed. All the comments that I asked for their testimony on may be resolved, and the ones that they agree to address will be addressed.
Okay.
So our view of this plan is still subject to these recommendations regarding stormwater management or all the other other sections being complied with in the future by the applicant?
Correct. So where does that take us up to now? So where does that take us up to now, either Mr. Koch or Mr. Allenbach?
That takes us through 44.
Okay. So it's 18 through 45, 44, excuse me. So that essentially will then be subject to review and verification by the township engineer.
All right, so the next section, traffic control review, 45?
And again, this is, I think, something that we could certainly provide to Mr. Koch's office and to the borough. You know, we did a circulation plan showing how a fire truck can access around the entire site. We felt it was not necessary to do garbage and recycling vehicles, because if a fire truck can make it, then obviously certainly those smaller vehicles can do it. But it's a matter of just providing an extra sheet in the set to show that these smaller vehicles can still make the turns. But we're comfortable with the fire apparatus making those maneuvers that a garbage and recycling vehicle can do the same thing.
Do you have the...
Yes. That's generally, that's correct. It's, which is the reason for the no comment letter.
So the implication that the letter that says that the fire people above who have reviewed your plans say, "We are satisfied. We can get our big fire trucks in here," and it is your testimony that because the fire trucks can get in there, the sanitary and recycling vehicles could as well, and you're going to submit an additional comment to verify that?
Right, and that's what I want to make it clear, that what you're saying, Mr. Wolfson, is that in fact, as I thought I heard Mr. Allenbach said, that you're going to provide a sheet, that an additional sheet, even though you have what you have from the county, you're going to provide an additional sheet for these other vehicles to submit to Mr. Koch. Right, so that, and he'll review that. So it is subject to that additional submission.
Absolutely. And again, I indicated, there's a sheet in the set that shows the fire truck maneuvers. Again, this would just be another circulation plan to show that the smaller vehicles can make those same turns.
Do you have that sheet you're referencing with the fire truck maneuverability?
They don't have it now.
Oh, okay.
It's in the sheet, I believe it's the sheet 21 of the set. I don't have it board.
Oh, okay.
No, but I thought I saw it in here somewhere, that's why I was...
Okay.
Sheet 21 of the set shows the fire turn plan. The only one, again, is Mr. Koch pointed out, C, flood hazard, again, that's what Mr. Koch talked about earlier. That's the one that we have to work out. If we do, in fact, need it, we will obviously go get it. But everything else is a will comply under 46. 47, 48 is a will comply. 49 is a statement about Title 39, and obviously we would agree to Title 39. 50, the fire official, I believe we spoke about that. And then 51 is tax collector. That's obviously something that we would, I don't know if it's a statement or a will comply, but we have to do that.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Wolfson, just two quick things that are kind of crossing over into Mr. Consenza's area, but something I always think about. Ron, can an ambulance get into the parking deck?
Yes.
Okay. And are the elevators large enough for a gurney?
Yes.
Thank you.
So to sum up so far from the CME Associates, April 7, 2023 letter, you're complying or will comply with everything except for point 15, which we haven't discussed yet.
Correct.
So this would be the letter from LRK dated April 5, 2023?
Yes.
Not to be confused with the one from March 17, March 6, January 18, or any of the other versions.
Well, you know, for the record, and maybe so that the public is aware, your consultants are tireless, and they give us a letter...
We like to think of ourselves as relentless.
Relentless. And we would meet with them, and they would explain what they want us to do, and we would do it and send it. And then they would revise their letter, and then we would do it again. So this last letter is the result of the last meetings that we had with them and the question, and the requests that they made, which I think, and we get to their part of the testimony, you'll see that we've complied with or satisfied them as to all the major items. So I'll give it to you.
I guess the question becomes, which is more efficient, to have Chris go through his report and then you guys respond, or are you in a position, Mr. Allenbach, to just indicate as you did? I think it's easier to do with an engineer, because it's comply, comply, or agree, agree. I'm not so sure that that works as well with Chris's letter, but I'll defer to either of you guys as to how you do it.
I think we can go through comment by comment since we've addressed many of them over the past couple of years.
Okay, great. So do you want to do it, Chris, or should I let Ron do it? I prefer Ron to do it, and you...
That's fine. And I can comment on each one, if you skip one or more clarification needed.
So I guess what we're doing in, the first of the members of the public, there's a section one, which is summary, which we've kind of already done that, completeness, we've already done that, existing property, and that's number three. We've already had that presentation. Four is the applicant's proposal. That's, oh, I'm sorry, then there's five. Maybe we start at five.
I'm sorry, Roger, I don't think we've actually talked about the C variances they're looking for, so maybe we don't skip over four.
But that's six, we're not there.
Oh, okay.
We're not there yet.
There's only the one with the buffer.
Right. Right.
Very good, okay.
So my thought is that if everybody agrees, we'll start with six, or five, and five, okay?
Agreed.
Uh, yes.
My five is zoning review.
Yes, it is. And it's, and then it flips over to page...
Page, page five, plan review.
Yeah, the page number got messed up.
Yeah, the page number's got a little screwy, but nonetheless.
Plan review.
Yeah, plan review. Well, actually, I think it's paragraph five.
5.0 zoning review.
You know, if the zoning stuff, I guess...
I think it's important to say it out loud.
I guess it indicates...
More unusual variances in the buffer.
Well, there is the, I guess there's the one area where you talk about section 230.134. Dot, one dot N dot, the paren, for the buffer zoning minimum width of 25 feet required, eight foot proposed.
Right, but that's for Christine.
Okay, got it.
So I want to start Ron on the plan review.
That's fine. We'll go, so this is, this is now, just for the board members, we're now on plan review, which is item six.
To come back to 5.2.
Correct.
Well, section, section six may be addressed through Christine as well. Does it deposit a negative criteria?
All right. Come.
Oh, yeah.
We'll put a pin on five, 5.2 and all of six.
And six is really just simply stating the criteria for the zoning, so that, we don't need to go through that yet. Go ahead, seven, sorry.
No worries, thank you. So 7.1 starts off with the baseline calculations, and again, it's more of a statement, just talking about the calculations for the parking spaces, required 153, I believe we have 156. Electrical vehicle calculations, again, this is obviously a new statute that's new to everybody, but we agree to comply with the number of spaces required now, as well as the make-ready and, I guess, the follow-up, is what the word will call it, for what you have to do over time, you know, in the next three years, the next six years, what you have to do. So we agree to comply with everything in the electrical vehicle calculations section of his letter.
7.2? Oh, I'm sorry, 7.2 is already the EV.
7.3, again, we added the, we added the concrete wheel stops. I think we had them on the site plan, not on the architectural, but either way, we agree to comply with that. The bicycles, we provided the 75 bicycles located on the lower level. We agree to comply with the recommendation of replacing the bike rack of doing the inverted U racks as suggested by the, by Chris. The motor court entry, this, we'd like to have the ability to work with the board professionals as it talks about introducing rain gardens around the circle where the signage is and some of those details in there, because it's unclear. We obviously have our stormwater management system that works, but then he's talking about doing some, some changes around there, like introducing some rain gardens in the center, and we don't have an issue with that. We'd just like to work with them exactly on the details of that to capture and allow further slow release before it goes into the inlets. And it says the final design of motor court will be coordinated, and we agree with that.
Okay.
Under 7.6, the, again, we provided the walkway from the motor court or from South Sixth Avenue, actually all the way through the site, and it traverses at the southern end of our site. He's asking for clarification on a note that's on the site plan that says tie into future sidewalk by others. The ordinance that was written for this site requires the developer to install a sidewalk to the terminus of their property at the southern end, which is what we're doing. We just put the note by others, assuming that at some point it's borough property, somebody else might be extending it, not us. Again, if there needs to be clarification on that note, we could certainly work with Chris's office on that, but we are putting in the walkway per the ordinance.
And that's, that's your understanding, Chris?
Yes, so it sounds like if, if it's possible, I'll work with the borough council on the ability to coordinate a design that would extend it to the existing walkway. If not, with a stub-end property, and we'll deal with it later.
The other item I skipped over, Chris, by accident, the second, the paragraph above that where it talks about possibly substituting a potentially wider asphalt as you get down the southern end of the property, we don't have an issue with that. Keep it consistent with the trails that are located in town already. On paragraph 7.7, the open space, again, there's not a whole lot of open space here. I think when we originally sat down with the borough and talked about the development of the site, it was anticipated that a portion of the bottom third of the site would be left for potential open space. Obviously, that's been encumbered by the attention basins needed to facilitate the development of the site. So we don't anticipate any dedicated open space on this property, because if it was, it'd be very little. Maybe the walkway would be a permanent easement that allow residents outside of this development to traverse from South Sixth through the site to the terminus of our property, but certainly no, it's not our intention to have any dedicated open space to either the borough or the county. That kind of ties into 7.8 with the steep slopes. The ordinance was written to not apply with the steep slope ordinance, and it only applies to open space areas, as I indicated, there really aren't any open space areas on the site. 7.9 on...
But before you move on, so do you, is it your testimony that you don't have to provide an open space deep slope map, or it's not necessary?
It's our intention, it's not needed, because there is no open space.
Chris, are you in agreement?
Yeah, based on the testimony, that open space is really limited to really the walkway at this point. I have no objection to that, because it's just a paper, paperwork seeking for additional calculations, really is implausible, doesn't change anything with regards to construction, so I'm okay with that.
Ready to go on, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Top of page seven, 7.9, tree removal and replacement. I know we spoke about that earlier with the waiver of providing the tree removal plan. I'll defer to Mr. Wolfson on the replacement portion of it.
And to clarify, not to overrule you, again, that was just for purposes of the checklist, not to waiver the plan, the tree removal plan in general.
Well, that's a legal issue that I want to raise at the end with probably 15.
No, I understand, but for purposes of, again, clarity and conversation for the public, want to be clear about that, that was just limited for the checklist purpose.
So how, and that means that we'll have further conversations at the conclusion?
I will, I will be addressing 15.
I'm sure you will.
And 7.1.
Under the landscaping, again, I think it's some minimal comments about some additional foundation plantings. Again, we'd be happy to work with the board professionals to supplement or add additional landscaping around the base of the building itself to provide some visual along there. And again, we work with Chris and Bruce on that. Lighting, we agree to comply. The one thing we would like to, again, this goes back, the second comment goes back to the motor court. And one of the comments earlier was working with Chris's office about the final design of the motor court. Again, it kind of ties into that with some of the lighting that they're looking to do in there, with maybe some low ambient volatiles around it and stuff like that. So again, we don't have an issue with it. We'd like to work with Chris's office on the final design on that. And obviously, the dark sky compliant is not an issue. We would comply with that. The trash enclosure, again, as indicated, we do have an outside trash enclosure that's for additional trash and recyclables. We do have the indoor trash compactor that's located in the parking structure, and there's obviously requirements in the ordinance that pertains to screening for that outdoor trash enclosure, and we agree to comply with, with that. As far as the appropriately sized to accommodate, it just comes down to, most of our communities, it comes down to a frequency, more so of what it's size. It just comes down to, sometimes you have to pick up three times a week instead of two times a week without having a large unused trash recycling area. So we own and manage it. We own the property, we're going to manage the property, and we just base it on our usage. Sometimes on Mondays, there's a heavy pickup because of the weekends, and then sometimes you have to pick up twice a week, sometimes three times a week.
So trash removal's not through the borough? It would be privately managed?
Mechanical equipment, again, we indicated in one of our meetings, AC condensers will be on the roof. We do anticipate a generator. We're not sure where it's going to go yet. Obviously, we would work with the borough. I'm not sure if there's a permit required.
There's always a permit required.
Obviously, we would have to, you know, we don't know where it is right now, but we're, we're going to be putting a generator in. The only thing on here is the transformers, because sometimes the transformers are out of our control. Utility company, they install them wherever they want. Obviously, we have to comply with some of the landscaping stuff around it, but the transformer will be done by, set by the utility company, and we'll screen it the best we can and abide by their, their rules and regulations.
Any concern with that additional placement affecting your impervious coverage calculations? I don't know how big these would be.
Yeah, no, we don't anticipate anything large here for a transformer, and we're not, we have room on our, in our impervious calculations.
So in other words, really, this one here is subject to, just a second, Bruce, subject to the utility location, but an agreement that it would be appropriately screened. Yes, Bruce?
Just a quick question, if I may, regarding the generator, is that to serve the whole building or just emergency facilities on lighting and elevators?
Typically, what we do is just the main services. There will be, what we've done in other buildings is put a generator in that'll operate, obviously, emergency lighting, elevators. We do have outlets in the lobby in several areas that still operate under the generator situation, so that people can still charge their phones in the event that they're, have to stay inside the building during an emergency, even if their power's out. So it would be, it's not for the entire building. It'd be selective for what people could use if they had to stay inside the building.
My only concern would be noise, and do you anticipate rooftop?
No.
Ground mounted?
Ground mounted.
So at lowest level, you should, sound could potentially be attenuated by the walls? So, lowest level, you should, sound could potentially be attenuated by the walls? What's your idea of being concerned with that, is that that drum, during those periods of time? Does the noise level affect the building?
You also have to be tested.
Yeah, they can exercise, and that's all.
Is the noise level testing part of the permit application process for anyone installing a generator, or?
I don't think so. You have to comply with the state requirements.
That's what I was going to ask a question. I know that there are state requirements, as we all know, but does that require, does that apply in an emergency where a generator is taken into account?
I'm not sure if it does, but it's something I've governed or tried to govern.
Okay.
For all applications like this.
And therefore, that having been said, I have been involved in any number of applications where it's agreed that if there is a generator, and it's going to end up, from what my understanding, it's going to have to be tested usually once a month, it's my understanding, so it would be, I think, reasonable to request that the generator would be enclosed in some type of a soundproofing structure. You would agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Thomas, it's usually a critical grade silencer and a hospital grade enclosure. That's not a supply issue again.
Hospital grade, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, so that takes us past 7.13.
7.14, I will thank Chris for the first line, where he expresses appreciation to applicant, working with his office and Bruce's office. You know, again, Chris, these are certain items that are, I think, I'm out of chair, more suggestions, and I'm not sure how you want to handle this, because there's some in here that we don't have an issue with, or some that we'd like to work with you on. So, I'm not sure how you want to handle this.
Yeah, generally speaking, all these comments or recommendations, I like to give the opportunity to, like, a sketch over, a couple rounds. The goal is not to add cost, but sort of find little ways to really try to really hit that Tudor style, trying to achieve. You're almost there, in my opinion, so I just try to do a little tweaks here and there.
So, for purposes of the record, maybe what we could say, if there's ultimately going to be an approval, that with regard to 14, 714, that these are suggestions that the developer will agree to work with the planner's office to accommodate where we're reasonable.
Yeah, based on our history, it was too defensive. I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Yeah, the latter half of the questions are more the suggestions. The first half are really questions pertaining to the townhouse units, see there's more, greater livability for those units, and provide a hallway down to the flats at the corner. It's just some questions about how the layout of the building is situated. I know you provided some testimony generally, but just get some feedback about the townhouse units and how it relates to the lack of the corridor for that end unit, for the flat, particularly on the first floor. The two shallow wings, I think it's just an issue regarding some line weights and missing hatching. It's unclear what's indoors versus exterior. So, I think it's just some issues as you work on a design for a construction, those issues will be resolved, and in the last two sections, I think it's been addressed. The roof plan, I was seeking a copy of, so I can get a better understanding if the mechanical units were situated in a well, similar to Bruce's comment on making sure the HVAC units, not the generator, the HVAC units were shielded from view.
Okay.
And it looks like it's situated in a well, so the units aren't visible, and the sound attenuation has improved.
That's correct.
15, 715.
715, unless Chris disagrees, I believe, it's a statement talking about the affordable component of the site. So, required to put 11 and a half units, we're providing the 12 units as required by the ordinance.
So, obviously, a statement that you agree with.
And this is under the assumption that this is the rental project, 15%.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that leaves us with three large bolts and points to address, right? Your C1 variances.
Well, I think we've got 18 and.
But I'd like to put Chris, you know, in for two minutes.
That was about, that's where I was going with this, because I give you another.
I would ask the board's indulgence on this. We can finish this if you can, if 7:30.
All right.
Excuse me, when can board members ask questions of?
I think with consent of the board, as long as testimony's concluded by like 10:35, we give the judge.
Before the next witness comes.
We will definitely have to continue this conversation at the next meeting. I do not see any way that we're going to be able to take public testimony and board questions before this evening's completed. This is definitely going to need to roll over.
Well, I would ask the board to relax, it's 10:30.
10:30 is for testimony, and we do run to 11, but out of consideration for the board members and members of the public, running later than that is frankly, I think, more than.
Well, let me just make a comment. You know, we understand that this is an affordable housing project, and we understand that the board is required to give accommodations, and, but I don't think the board is in a position where it has to bend all of its rules, and therefore, what I would say is that one of the accommodations is that, as you know, this is the end of a religious holiday, Passover, and under normal circumstances, this meeting would probably be not having, taking place at all. And as a result, of an accommodation to this application, recognizing its affordable housing status, we started it at 8:30. Yes, unfortunately, there was a need to, I shouldn't say unfortunately, there was a need to do something with regard to township or borough business, and we've now started as quickly as possible. So, I don't want to belabor it, but I think we've made accommodations, and we'll try to do as best we can, but I'm not sure that we're going to be able to finish it today. And if we don't, certainly that you will be the next one on the very next meeting, which will be the meeting in, we're now in April, I'm trying to, it'll be the May meeting, so it won't be forever away.
No, I appreciate how much support is up there and the professionals, so I want to be on the right side.
Okay. You made the ask.
I appreciate it. So, let's hear from your planner, then.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help be God?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please?
Yes, of course. Good evening, Chairwoman and members of the board. It's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Coffon, C-O-F as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. Testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner, I've been practicing as such for 28 years in the state of New Jersey. I have been qualified here in Highland Park. It's been a minute, maybe a decade or so, but I've been qualified for over 400 or so planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I'm also a court-appointed affordable housing special master, serving about two dozen communities.
Well, first of all, I didn't know that there were 400 boards, planning boards in the state, but let's assume that's the case. I am familiar with her work, and I have no questions regarding her qualifications as far as planning, unless Chris does. That was a, that was a, okay.
We're good. Thank you.
Christine, this application, although tailored for ordinance under the settlement obligation, there was a requirement that we seek a variance for a buffer violation due to the fact of the fire marshal's request to widen the length. Could you explain what that variance is and why you think it's broken the deviance?
Correct. So, the variance, as I understand it, is for a, we're required to have a 20-foot perimeter buffer, and at some, certain points, we only have eight feet. And as Mr. Wolfson indicated, and as is indicated in Chris Cassenza's review letter, that is because the county fire marshal asked us to have a, an access around the entirety of the building. So, what we are doing, as we often do as planners, is we are balancing the requests of the fire official and trying to provide some buffering in accordance with the ordinance. I would submit to the board that I think the board can grant it under the C2 statutory criteria, that it presents a better zoning alternative. Of course, we generally always try to accommodate the fire official's request, but we also try to balance that with the requests in the ordinance and the request of your professionals. We do, I would like the record to be clear, we do have a planted buffer around the entirety of this track, and I do believe Mr. Cassenza recognizes that in his review letter. But we are seeking some relief. Mr. Cassenza does also make some suggestions in his review letter as to things that we could do to improve the efficiency of our buffer, and I think we certainly threw that by adding some additional foundation plantings, but also focusing on the quality and type of plantings, having some native species there. So, I certainly think our applicant, we would accept a condition of approval to work with your planner's office. But under the statutory criteria, I believe the board can look at it as a C2, advancing purpose A of the municipal land use law, which talks about promoting the general welfare. Criteria G of the land use law, which talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. This is an as-of-right use in the MFAH multifamily residential overlay zone, so certainly it's an appropriately zoned location. And criteria I, which talks about promoting a desirable visual environment. In addition to the bulk criteria in the MFAH, there are some building design guidelines in there, and we certainly comply with those. So, this is what I would consider a substantially conforming inclusionary development. The developer is proposing to build the units on-site, and it's an important part of your housing plan. As far as the negative criteria, the land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh the detriment, and that there's no substantial detriment on the intent and purpose of the land use plan. Well, when you, the ordinance, when you look at the stated purpose of the MFAH zone, which is this residential overlay district, is established in order to potentially address the Borough's future fair share obligation and for the following general purposes, and then it goes on. So, this is absolutely a zone that was created to address the Borough's fair share. Mr. Cassenza asks, also asks for us in his review letter, he asks us to talk about the variance relief as it relates to the master plan. Highland Park, you last reexamined your master plan here in 2019. It was an incredibly well-done plan. It had a whole section on community engagement, which I thought was really fantastic, but one of the things in that master plan relating, as Mr. Cassenza asked us to, relating this variance relief to the goals in that, is if you had an opportunity to look at the goals, one of the goals in that 2019 plan is to promote housing diversity, and the plan talks specifically about promoting a variety of housing types, single-family, multifamily, apartment, town homes, rental, et cetera, to serve a diverse population, age, income, and family living structure. So, I certainly think that this application accomplishes creating that type of diversity and is consistent with the vision of the MFAH zoning district, as well as the recently adopted 2019 master plan here in Highland Park. I think it is a project that is substantially conformance, not only to the zoning in the master plan, but to your affordable housing settlement agreement as well. So, with that being said, I think we meet our statutory burden of proof for the grant, and this is the only variance relief that's required in conjunction with this application.
So, the test is, the benefits have to outweigh, because what the benefit of the deviation is to provide for safer fire access, isn't that right?
It's to provide fire access around the entirety of the building, as was requested specifically by the county fire marshal.
So, that's the benefit of the deviation.
Yes.
The detriment is that we lose some distance on the buffer.
We lose some distance on the buffer, but I don't disagree with Mr. Cassenza, that with a combination of addressing it through native plantings and some foundation plantings, that we can certainly meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
That's our plan, just not in favor.
With your original application, there were additional C variances requested. All those have been removed.
The sign was reduced to five.
All right. So, the.
This is the only one.
So, the signed variance was removed.
We will comply with the sign.
Chris, do you have any questions or comments with regard to?
Do you have any kind of questions or comments with regard to this testimony?
Thank you. I think the proofs provided were, in my view, sufficient for the board to consider weighing the C2 variance. With regard to the eight-foot setback, it might not be a question for you, maybe perhaps for Ron, could you clarify where on the site plan you're deficient to, down to eight feet? Because I see dimensions on the south side of the project where the buffer is 20 feet, 35 feet, down to 11 by the Borough-owned lots at the corner of Mansfield, Mansfield Street and South Sixth Avenue.
It's on the western elevation, Mr. Cassenza, but Mr. Onback can stand up and point that out on the plan as you requested. So, it's along Graham Street, Mr. Cassenza?
Maybe you could just give us what the sheet is.
So, I am looking at sheet PS1 in the plan set dated 8/24/20, with revisions current to 8/24/23.
I think that's page four in our.
Prepared by EP Design Services.
What's it labeled?
I think it's four in our.
And I think.
Okay. So, it's the proposed site and geometry plan?
It's titled Proposed Site and Geometry Plan, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Proposed Site and Geometry Plan, Gabriel Estates.
Sheet four, in the package. So, it's Gabrielle.
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 Not Gabriel.
Gabrielle.
Okay. It's not the Angela. It's the problem with my grandeur in the other. How true Angela, how easy it is.
What's that, yeah?
I think it would be helpful for the members of public if we could readjust the ease a little bit, since we have printouts and the public doesn't have the benefit of the close.
So, the deviation is along the Paper Street of Graham, where we have a nine-foot buffer, and then along our eastern property line, we have approximately a 10-foot buffer in that area. So, that, we do, again, it's hard to tell on this sheet, because it's a black and white plan sheet, but we are proposing, it's a little easier to see, do we have this marked in evidence yet?
Yes.
So, you can see sheet two of A1 in evidence shows that we do have green around the entire perimeter of our site, but the deficiency is along our eastern property line and along the Paper Street of Graham.
And with regard to the Graham Street, Paper Street, oh, sorry, Graham Street, Paper Street, what is within that area? Is it wooded? Is it cleared?
It's wooded.
Okay, so the deviation doesn't really impact any properties, or it's not viewable from the street, it can't be seen, doesn't really impact the public, would you say?
Correct, yes.
What about the east side, it's really the contention of, or really the basis of the deviation request, because the west side has a 20-foot buffer as required.
Right.
So, the deviation request.
Can we clear away a little bit from the presentation for members of the public viewing the board's?
So, the east side is the deviation where we're contiguous with a single-family, we have a single-family buffer along that. So, we back up to, our deviation goes to the rear yards of the adjoining single-family homes.
Yeah, and I'll just ask a question from planner and planner. What is your experience with the width of buffer and heights that's screened for, between residential uses? What do you normally see as far as requirements, notwithstanding what's in the underlying in this ordinance?
So, it depends on the context of the community. If it's a more urban or more dense community, you may see a fence is sufficient for a buffer with no landscaping whatsoever. If you're buffering between two residential uses, it depends what you have. If you had active, if we had more active recreation in that area, or fields, you might want to see, or lights. But since we don't have any lights in that area that would be spilling over onto the adjoining property lines, and because we're balancing the provision of the fire safety, I think 10 feet, if you do provide for an evergreen screening, I think 10 feet gives you ample space to create an evergreen screening. If you put an evergreen so that you have a year-round screen, I think you can certainly accomplish a sufficient buffer from residential to residential in 10 feet.
But you're asking for eight feet.
We're asking for eight, but that's along Graham. It's really nine. But along the, along our property line contiguous to the east with the single-family homes, we have 10.
Okay, so you're not asking for an eight-foot along that property line, or asking for 10?
We are not.
So, that means the deviation requests against, were really what the ordinance is intended to protect was neighbors who front on really both South Seventh Avenue and South Fifth Avenue, but relative to the deviation requests for those residents who front on South Seventh Avenue, it's now limited to a 10-foot buffer, and I happen to agree with the planner that typically you see a five, a 10-foot buffer between residential uses, residential uses. If it's a non-permitted use or commercial use, you tend to see 20, 25 feet or even wider. We were aggressive with ordinance in negotiation, trying to get the 20-foot buffer, and I think it's also helpful to know what is the structure that is encroaching into the 20-foot requirement? Is it a building, or is it?
Absolutely not, no. Our building complies. There's absolutely no building, and I think that that's an important point, because it's actually tiered walls in that area. So, you have the eight-foot buffer, and then you have some tiered retaining walls there, which are required to construct the street. So, it's not as if we have eight feet and then we're at those property lines. You have eight feet, and then you have a tiered wall system, so.
You mean 10 feet a lot?
10, I'm sorry, I keep saying eight.
It's okay, just for clarity.
Sorry, yes, 10.
And a tiered wall system steps down from the site, meaning that the residents won't see a wall stepping up. So, I think the open space is, in a sense, being preserved, notwithstanding the narrower buffer as required by ordinance, but the intent of a buffer is to provide an opportunity to screen something, and I, in my opinion, I think there's sufficient space to achieve that, so long as the applicant agrees to. agrees to work with my office. But I'll probably defer much of that to coordination and consultation with the street tree advisory committee to advise on the proper species and density to achieve the intended buffers. I think it's a workable solution that we can achieve.
Bruce, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to point out that a portion of the Graham Street right-of-way that you're referring to will have to be cleared in order to allow the water main to loop through to Seventh. So we can ask that they do that in as little space as possible in terms of width, and probably still preserved, you know, between the eight that's there and maybe another 12. We probably maintain 20 feet there, so I just think we can do it in a careful manner where that piece of woods remains on the community side.
Thank you, Bruce. This is, it's not really a question as much as a request. It's very hard to picture what you're talking about, because I'm not seeing any, what I would call a crosscut. So you're not seeing, you know, the elevation of the single-family houses, the buffer, the retaining walls, your, the project, and, you know, that would be something, you know, even not, you know, architectural per se, but just something that gives us an idea of this is what it looks like. It's, you know, from a top-town view, it's very difficult to judge buffering.
It looks flat on the plan.
Yeah. So that, it's just a suggestion, it's, you know, I don't want to...
Before anyone makes any further comments, I'm just going to make one more note, and I know how it sounds. It is just after 10:40, and I'm going to let conversation continue for a few more minutes, but out of respect for our rules and meeting requirements, and in recognition that we really cannot give this the attention it needs and hear from the public the way we need to hear on this application before the end of this evening's meeting. So that is why we will adjourn this and hear again in the future at our May 11th meeting. And I strongly encourage anyone who came out tonight, or anyone else who maybe couldn't come tonight and wants to come at the May 11th meeting, to come and provide public comment, where we have a sufficient amount of time to hear from you. So I don't want there to be any question about why we're not going to take public comment tonight, it's just so we can give you the time to hear from you, and also members of the board. So we can continue our discussions for a few more minutes, and then we'll wrap up for the evening, okay? Collegia, I think, was first, and then we'll go to Dan. All right, thank you.
So I actually can picture this area, because I grew up in, on that street, on South Seventh Avenue, 424. So that's where I grew up. I played in Buckwoods as a kid, so I know how the elevation works, actually, and I can completely picture where your retaining wall is, and I can picture your tiered system. My question for you is, those retaining walls and the placement of those retaining walls in order to sort of like reinforce and avoid erosion, would those have to be at that location regardless of the size of the building? So like, my question is, if the building was a little more narrow, if you lost some square footage in your courtyard, your retaining walls, where they're currently placed, would they still have to be there, or would those move further as well?
I'm going to clarify that question to my engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, again, as you're familiar with the site, the elevation, it's a div.
Right.
You know, so in order to get a building in there, whether it's even a little narrow, those walls are going to have to be up along the perimeter, and they're going to have to be tiered. So the whole purpose of what we meant with the borough was not to have a 20-foot wall, and that's why we have the tiered situation. So you have, you know, even though we have a 10-foot, a 10-foot buffer here, where 20 foot required, the wall drops down, and then we have an eight-foot buffer. So you have a retaining wall located, you're not allowed to have a retaining wall within a 20-foot buffer, but we have, it can be compared, we have an 18-foot buffer from the lower retaining wall to the property line. And so, and then you do that, and you drop again, and you have to have the fire access. So you can steal a little bit from the building, but the courtyard's at its minimum width right now, from the fire safety to the courtyard, so that can't really change. So we think we designed it the best way we can under the constraints of the existing top goal. You know, because you remember, these walls here have to be secured into the maximum, they have to be at a certain distance to have your geogrid and everything, and the walls itself.
That's, yes, and that's why I'm asking. I'm asking for that reason, that the size of the building does not dictate where the retaining walls would have had to go anyway.
It sounds like, and the simple answer, do I understand, Ron, is the simple answer, it's the topography, not the building, that's dictating this.
Correct. Okay. And that's what I wanted to make clear.
Dan?
Just to kind of contextualize the setbacks in the existing neighborhoods on South Fifth and South Seventh, do we know what the kind of typical setbacks or spacing are between the existing structures on those two streets? So we can kind of think about these in the context of what's already there.
Are you referring to the required rear setback, or typical built?
Just typical built within the neighborhood.
One of the sheets on the plans has boxes representing the homes. I don't have a scale with me, but I would estimate 50 to 60 feet setbacks. I don't think this is a scale either. But I would estimate 50 to 60 foot setbacks in a rear lot line.
Just so we're clear, I want to make sure, there's a distance from our property line to the existing buildings. I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
I was actually, I was actually to clarify, I was referring, I was referring to building to building, yeah.
Yeah, building to building is probably somewhere around 12 to 15 feet.
Okay.
You know, based on existing survey, you know, if you're...
Yeah, I see, there's no scales.
This is 30 scale, so probably like 12.
Because we have a...
Bruce is insisting on that scale.
Yeah. Isn't it 20 feet definitely to build?
Hi. Can you explain, on the plans, you have a couple of spaces on the ground floor for amenities? Can you explain what kind of amenities you're envisioning?
Yeah, so typically what we have in our rental communities is we would have, there's going to be a business center, you know, the rest is centered for people to work at. There's typically, there's going to be a gym, a fitness area, depending on, you know, as time goes on, things change, people's needs change, but, so we'll have a business center, a break room, too, or a larger gathering area. Sometimes you do a billiard room, or a movie room, you know, media room, depends on the needs of the tenants as we get to construction on this.
So along with that, so that you will consult with the tenants as you start to, as they start to occupy the building, as to the amenities?
Not necessarily with those tenants, but based on what we have in the area. We have developments in both the Scottyway and the Bronson stuff, based on what we have there, and what the tenants see. It's no different than a lot of our communities now, we're doing pickleball boards, which if you would ask for five years ago, I wouldn't even tell you what pickleball boards are.
I mean, just looking at the plans, you have a lot of two, three, or four-bedroom units, so presumably there will be families, so that's great, I love families, okay. I'm not, don't take me there the wrong way. But families, people of all incomes and ages, young kids, so it sounds like the proposed uses are for adults. So you, you know, I'm just saying, you know, what you're going to have here is you have children. And so what I noticed in the plans, there's no outdoor, there's no outdoor play structures for children, I didn't see anything in the courtyard area. But I'm going to call your attention to three parcels that are just at the southwest corner of Mansfield and South Sixth. They're owned by the town. Lots five, six, and seven, I think they're, five, hold on. Well, I think they're like, like three, four, lots three, four, and five, or five, four, five, and six, something like that. And the blocks and lots have changed, so it's hard. But those, it's about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of borough-owned property that I think is well-suitable for potential contribution from you to put a play structure in, since you don't have one on your property. And at a minimum, that the, that the borough-owned property be graded and prepped, right, because half the property, almost half of it, is on steep slope, just like your property is. So if you have a retaining wall, you're already doing retaining walls. You work with the borough engineer to, you know, have your retaining wall match the needs of our borough-owned property, so that it's graded in such a way that a playground or other, whatever the borough needs can be accommodated. And it certainly, you do have, you do need, you have recreation needs here, you certainly do. And I think this is a really great place for such a, it's right next to your property, it's like touching your property.
I'm not sure what, you're going to convey, the town's going to give us the property, we're going to build...
No, you could, well, you could, you could grade the property, and then provide a play structure, or money in lieu, to have a play structure, you know, built on the site. Well, your residents could use it, but the borough residents could use it too.
I'm always cautious. Well, I understand that, but maybe that's... I don't know that you may want to make a definitive response, Mr. Wolfson, to that suggestion. Maybe we can explore that and see where it goes, because we are going to be back on May 11th.
I think that's a very good idea, I want to take the...
I'll try to get a little bit more definitive.
If you're people, then be willing to have that in mind, and we'll take the ownership and see.
Thank you, Jeff.
We just want to be very careful that we don't cross any red lines.
Understood.
Okay. With that, I think this is a good stopping point for the evening, for consideration, and for all the reasons I said before. I have, I have questions, I have no doubt other members of the board have questions, and I know members of the public have issues that need to be more thoroughly discussed and opinions given, do consideration too. So we will resume your application at our next meeting, not to mention that we do need to continue to get testimony from you on CME point, was it 15?
Not so much testimony, it's just...
If it's a legal argument testimony, however you choose to present your position on those issues, and the LRK 7.9, so...
Let me have that conversation with you, just to clean out.
Bruce, did you have a...
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that having been said, this matter will be carried without further notice until the 11th of May or 2023. That will be at 7:30 regular time, so that you understand, without further notice, this is the only notice that you get, but you are certainly invited back to this location at that time, and at that time you'll be given opportunities to ask questions and to give testimony, similar to what has been done by the applicant. Thank you all for coming.
All right, well, wait, just officially, I think I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a...
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.